I will call on the town clerk and ask him to read the call to the meeting and the constable's return.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Worcester SS, to either of the constables of the town of Berlin in the county of Worcester. Greetings, in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town, qualified to vote in elections and in town faith, to meet at the Berlin Memorial School in said Berlin on Monday, the fourteenth day of November two thousand sixteen next, at seven o'clock in the evening, then and there to act in the following articles or in relation thereto. And you are directed to serve this warrant by posting up attested copies thereof as per vote of the town in said town, seven days at least before the time of holding said meeting. Hereof fail not and make the due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of meeting as before said, given under our hands this twenty-fourth day of October in the year of our Lord two thousand sixteen. Board of selection, Judith Bowman Chairman, Thomas Andrew Vice Chairman, Christine Keith Clark. A true copy attest, Robert B. Williams Constable. Worcester SS, pursuant to the within warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Berlin by posting up the test copies thereof at the town hall, the town offices, and the post office twenty-one days before the time of holding said meeting as within directed. Robert B. Williams Constable, October twenty-five, two thousand sixteen.
And before we start this evening's business, I'm gonna call in, uh, Selectman Judy Bowman to explain something that will be of some importance to all of us in the coming days. Judy?
At the May twenty fifteen town meeting-
No, you're not coming through well. You need to be more direct.
Hello?
That's better.
At the May twenty fifteen town meeting, um, we approved an article that was a resolution to seek lower electric rates. And what this article did was gave, well, it's set the town, set in motion the ability for the town to go out and seek, um, an alternative supplier other than National Grid for the entire town. So right now, when you get a, a third-party supplier, it's on your own. This will be a default out position, so, um, it was just approved last month. And on Thursday, we're going out to bid for the rates. And in December, you will all be receiving opt-out cards. So if you do not want to have your supplier come from whoever's been chosen as the electrical supplier, you can send the card in and you'll stay on National Grid or whatever company you're currently using for electra. So in the month of December, you'll be receiving opt-out cards in the mail. Um, the bid, we will only accept a bid if the price is lower than the current National Grid, um, price. That's all I had to say.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes. Mr. Wheeler?
So, do you anticipate having a figure, um, prior to our getting notice?
Yes.
And, and you'll know this Thursday. Perfect.
Article one on this warrant is about the town hall elevator project in which I have been involved in, with others in, in, in planning. So I'm gonna step down for this article and I'll call on the town clerk to, um, for the election of a temporary moderator.
Is there a nomination for temporary moderator?
Nominate Tim Wheeler.
Okay, are there any other nominations? If none, hearing none, I will ask you to vote. All those in favor of Timothy Wheeler for temporary moderator, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Mr. Wheeler is elected.
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Um, this will be Article One in regard to requesting the Board of Selection to expend from the Highland Commons Cultural Fund an additional sum not to exceed a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to supplement sums approved under Article thirty-eight of the May two thousand and sixteen annual town meeting for the purpose of the elevator project for the eighteen seventy town hall building, demolition and replacement of the historical commission cultural curatorial building, associated site work, and the additional architectural cost oversee the project or take any action alter thereto. Do we have a motion? Mr. Anderson?
Mr. Moderator, I move to request the Board of Selection to expend from the Highland Commons Cultural Funds an additional one hundred and thirty thousand dollars to supplement sums approved under Article thirty-six of the May two thousand sixteen annual town meeting for the purpose of the elevator project for the eighteen seventy town hall building, demolition and replacement of the historical commission curatorial building, associated site work, and the additional architectural cost to oversee the project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you. Um, do we have any comment from the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee has voted to recommend this?
Um, thank you. And other? You're prepared? You're gonna be the one?
I will, I will speak immediately.
Thank you, sir.
Um, there is a handout that was available, um, here and it, it sets things out pretty well, so I'll try to be brief. Uh, the reason that we're voting for this again is that, um, in the spring, we had, um, applied for effectively a matching amount from the Mass Cultural Facilities Grant Program. Uh, that amount, uh, came in and instead of a four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, it came through as two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. That was, uh, either the highest or the second highest grant that was given by the program, so it represents a very significant, uh, amount of support. And then additionally, we were extrapolating from bid estimates that were done in the spring of nine, of two thousand fifteen. Uh, we were, uh, projecting a four percent, um, inflation rate, which was, you know, more than twice the general CPI inflation rate. And in fact, um, the bids came in about a twenty percent annualized rate above that. And so, uh, we found ourselves short, uh, money to continue this project, to complete the project. Uh, we have taken two steps really to, at this point, to mitigate the effects of the increase. Uh, we have, uh, carved back the parking area, uh, leaving, uh, parking areas sufficient to support access and handicapped access, uh, but not having so many parking spaces. And that was allowed us to bring the bid cost for this work down from a little over a million to eight hundred and seventy-three thousand, uh, dollars. Uh, we've also, um, secured a, uh, an extension of sixty days to the bid acceptance period to allow this, uh, this meeting to vote on the additional funds. Uh, we have a representative of a contractor here and I'd like to thank them for their understanding they are really supportive of this project, um, as well. Um, the bottom line then is that we need to vote a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to, uh, continue this. Um, that money is proposed to come out of the Highland Commons Cultural Fund. That will leave us with a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in the cultural fund. Um, the cultural fund is a, a grant or gift account that's expended by the Board of Selection. We have a policy to seek your advice and consent for the spending of that. We have, uh, effectively a sort of a mini grant process in which we look at the relevance and importance of a project to educational, recreational, cultural, and similar interests in the town. We look at the availability of other funding. We don't wanna spend this money for things that would be spent out in an operating account. Uh, and then finally, we look at demonstrated community and alternate financial support because we feel that we should use this fund to leverage other spending and not necessarily accept it relatively small projects that have no alternate funding to be the, to be the full source. If what we had hoped for had come through as the Mass Cultural Grant, it would have meant that about sixty percent of this project would have been funded from other than the, the cultural account. Without this, I would still note that forty-three percent of the funding will come from alternate sources, either appropriated funds or a state, uh, or the state grants. Um, if we were to abandon this project now, we would leave the two hundred and forty-two thousand dollar grant from the state on the table. And that really has ramifications, I think, beyond just that grant. Um, we've had a history once before of turning back a grant and, uh, town officials and state reps worked very, very hard to get a very, very generous grant, um, under this. And to turn it back really damages the town's long-term credibility in terms of applying for these things. And we've also spent a hundred and five thousand dollars, uh, on the initial stages of this project. So to abandon it at this point would basically to, be to leave three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, on the table. That's, uh, that's a third of the project cost that, uh, we would leave on the table without any particular benefit to the town. Um, bottom line, uh, I think that if we look at this, under this funding structure and with this a hundred and thirty thousand from the cultural fund, it will mean that we will be able to accomplish a project that will cost a little over a billion dollars, a million and twenty-six thousand, and a cost to the local taxpayers here of only two hundred and thirty thousand dollars out of your annual taxes. And I think, uh, that's a pretty admirable result. Uh, I think we, we worked hard, both in negotiating that cultural fund and in getting the state grant to, uh, really limit the cost and impacts to your tax bills, uh, in a pretty optimal way and allow us to accomplish, uh, the access to this building. So I'd strongly urge your positive vote tonight.
Um, thank you. Now, is there anyone else presenting in room? Tom? There's no one else that's presenting as part of the initial proposal here, right? Okay. So are there other town boards that wish to comment before I open it up to the general No one from other boards? Very good. So we'll open it up now for general discussion. Um, are there others that wish to speak? So if you come up and just tell us who you are, since I don't remember everybody's-
Same one, these are short people, really. Uh, Tina Santos, Thrillindus Street. Um, there's a couple of things here. First of all, they keep talking about we only have to come up with two hundred and whatever thousand, as if the money from Highland Commons is not our money that we are gonna have to come up with. Um, so when all is said and done, we are gonna have to come up with about three-quarters of the cost of this project. Um, the state's coming up with two hundred and forty-two, I think it is, and the rest of it is ours. Um, the second thing that I find kinda curious is, uh, they took six years to come up with a plan. Then they spent the last two years telling us that that plan cannot in any way, shape, or form be modified. Then they modified it. Have you seen the new plan? I have, I found about, out about it this afternoon. It wasn't online, there's no reference to where it is, there's very little reference to what it, to what we're talking about here. They said they made modifications for the parking lot, but we haven't seen anything. Um, so after all that, they're now trying to rush this through. We have to vote really, really quick. They can take eight years and drag their feet, but we have to vote tonight without knowing what we're looking at. It's a million-dollar plan. I mean, you can talk about it's nine fifty, it's eight fifty, seven, it's a million bucks, more or less. This is expensive. We already have three hundred thousand dollars, uh, sorry, three million dollars out for the new town barns. And I'm hearing today that that cost is actually gonna be greater. In any case, it's three million or more. Um, this is a million-dollar improvement on a building that is only worth two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There are lower-cost ways of making it accessible. And that's the big thing here, is that we do not have to be putting this much money into it. We can make it accessible for a much smaller amount. But so far, the committee has refused to actually look at any other options. Um, with the addition of the Recreation Committee, which I understand is probably useful for some of this money and would like to apply for it, and, and I'd like to see that happen. I'd like to see it spread out more. I think we need to, at the very least, take a step back and see what this new plan looks like. Um, as far as the modifications to the parking lot, and I don't know whether this still applies, but the first selection meeting after we found out we weren't gonna get the money from the state, um, what they had expected to do was cut down on the parking lot and ask for that money later. So I don't know if this new parking lot thing, again, if you haven't seen it, I don't know if this is the plan, if this is a temporary plan and they're gonna be coming back to us for more cash or what. I think we really need to look at the fact that in two thousand fifteen, we voted this down because we didn't wanna spend this much money on it. Last year, we voted in contingent on the state coming up with capital funds, but it turns out the state doesn't wanna put this much money into it either. So I, I think we really need to think this plan over. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, others that wish to speak? Yes.
Okay.
Tell us who you are.
Yes, I will. Julie Lee, one eighty South Street. I wrote down what I was gonna say. So we have a project here that unquestionably will provide benefit and important value to many people within our community. Based on this alone, it would make sense to approve this project. However, this isn't the only basis we must consider when voting for this article. We have to consider, is there a more affordable alternative to this project? Where is the money coming from to fund this project? And how that affects the community at large? We live in a society so rooted in impressive thinking and costly, grandiose building ideas, when practical thinking and less costly building ideas seem to be disregarded or even ignored for some reason. This impressive elevator project isn't a necessary project because there is a less expensive alternative to this large-scale project, one that will satisfy the valuable need, I'm just gonna take this off, and the worthy desire for accessibility and cost a fraction of the price, and that is the construction of a bump-out elevator. If we have another available option that will still satisfy the needs of this community, why aren't we pursuing that? Why are we entertaining this wondrous project idea? The scope of this project far exceeds our needs. If as a community, we agree we need an elevator to help those people who cannot make the stairs, and I've been on that list, in search of an elevator with two babies, in a stroller, two small toddlers in tow, believe me, I get the need for an elevator. But making stairs is not always a feasible option. I full-heartedly support streaming efforts to bring an elevator project to fruition, but let us do it the right way. Let us build what we need, and we don't need a million-dollar elevator. I think it will benefit everyone here if I quickly provide some clarity on the Highland Commons Cultural Fund, which is where this hundred and thirty thousand is slated to come from. When the Highland Commons Cultural Fund was established, it was done so with many projects in mind. A pool of roughly seven fifty was created. It was designed for small project financial help. It was designed for groups to use after an application process, when that group had an idea for a project that would contribute to the preservation of the community. It was never designed to significantly fund one project. And now, the article before us is additional money for an elevator, an additional hundred and thirty thousand dollars, bringing the total to five hundred, excuse me, on the top, fifty-six thousand dollars. The fund was never designed for that, and we should not, as a community, be okay with supporting that. It will reduce the fund in the cultural account, leaving only a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, and that is not fair to any other group which has just begun their project planning, to be unable to access a portion of this fund to help with their project idea. Our town recreation department has had a very recent turnover of representatives, and we're interested in revitalizing our town's beautiful self-commas plot of land. We are in the initial stages of project planning, and we wanna be able to apply for cultural fund money to help assist with other small projects, like expand, fixing the tennis courts, expanding the small commons playground to include older kid-climbable equipment, leveling the soccer fields, or building a walkway that everybody can use, all-around self-commas. It's terribly unfair, the elevator project is seeking more money from this cultural fund when other groups have plans to use that money too. I think at this point, the elevator project has received more than enough money from this fund, and it's only right to allow other groups to use it too. We really have to keep this in mind as we vote tonight. We have to remember the intention of this fund, as well as the need of the community. As community members, it is our responsibility to uphold honor and integrity, even in the hardest situations and the most challenging circumstances. So before you go to vote tonight, I invite you to consider what is right and fair in regards to the money in the cultural fund, remembering it was designed to be split between several small projects, not one large one. I invite you to abandon this grandiose idea and embrace the call for a less pretentious one. Let us do what's right, vote this down, and go back to the drawing board for what the community needs.
Thank you. Others that wish to speak? Betsy Benson?
Betsy Benson, twenty-five Village Lane. I'm, I'm interested that there's so much concern that cheaper alternatives have not been explored. I participated in the design process in a very minor way, um, as, in my role as, um, chairman of the ADA Advisory Committee for the town, committee that is purely advisory. Um, and we did explore, the committee did explore a number of, um, possible options that would have cost less money. Um, I myself had been involved in an earlier plan that seemed like it would have cost a lot less money. I was convinced that that plan wouldn't work and that it would not in fact serve the town very well. I have been astounded since the town hall has come back into life at the amount of use that it has. Before, it was available as a civic meeting space for activities, public and private. Um, the only large places that we had in town that people could meet in and have events in were the two churches. Many people were not comfortable going to events in the churches and did not feel that the church was not theirs, it was not someplace that they particularly wanted to go to. When the town hall was reopened, suddenly the town claimed that as our building. I refer to the town hall as the town hall that built the town, rather than a town that built the town hall. Because when, once the town hall was open for that kind of civic activity, um, there was a cohesiveness that came to this town that there had not been before. And we are an aging town, um, we are an aging population nationwide, there will be increasing numbers of people that are not able to use that building if we don't go ahead and make it accessible. I would hate to see this building that has brought new life to this town become disused as few and fewer people are able to, to make, to access it. I think we've gone a good way in making a plan, it has been thoroughly reviewed, many attempts have been made to come up with cheaper solutions that have not been found. Um, we spent a good bit of money on this, we have a lot of subsidy for it. I think that this is very wise expenditure of our town funds.
Others that wish to speak?
Good evening, Peter Hoffman, one eighty-three Randall Road. I wanna point out a couple of things, uh, as we may, we think about what to do about this article. Our tax assessed value is estimated to go up by ten percent, and the tax rate will go down five pennies per thousand dollars. What that means is that we don't have enough money to fund the things we are buying. Now, in this case, part of it's coming from the cultural fund and some of it's coming from the tax base. Um, secondly, uh, there's the concept of mission creep, we hear that in the news a lot, this is something like budget creep. In my understanding, uh, there is gonna be another hundred thousand shortfall to go? Is there one hundred thousand more to go?
Nope.
That's it?
Well, let's have, Thomas, if that's a question you wanna answer, I can have Thomas come and speak to everybody.
All right, I'll, I'll wrap up and then maybe you can touch on that. But I was under the impression there was some additional monies that will still be required, um, to complete this project. And if that's the case, that's further budget, as I call it, budget creep. I think it's a very important project to have. It's incredible, and I wasn't part of this, so I can't really, um, speak to it intelligently, but it's incredible that we have to spend a million dollars to accomplish this goal. But I guess, all the numbers we see in the news are incredible, so this is just one more, but I think, uh, the, the budget creep is what, what worries me. And if there's no further monies there at this point anticipated, great, but it has gone up and, and might well still. Thanks.
Thomas, do you wanna address that?
Yes, the money that we're asking for at this point is to complete the project with a modified parking area. It will complete the project, um, according to our anticipation, um, and provide access. So we have the anticipation, we're going to come to ask you for more money. Uh, I think your question went to, we anticipate that we have another phase. Obviously, when you get into construction, there could be contingencies, but I don't know them today and I don't anticipate them. We have some money built into this figure for unanticipated contingencies. Oh, and, and one other thing. I just wanted to point out that there is nothing that you are voting tonight, um, that will go to your tax rate. This is money that is coming out of the, the cultural fund.
Mr. Edgar?
Barry Edgar, fifty-one South Street. I sit on the Historical Commission, which is involved in this project because we wanna see the town hall preserved and also because we have a storage building that's involved in this, which unfortunately was on the property when the town bought it, and it's in the wrong place right now in terms of working with the plan to addition to the town hall and the elevator. So therefore, that's to be replaced too. And the method of replacing that is that the foundations and so forth for what we built is part of the main contract, and then afterward, we're gonna have Asset Valley School come and build the building on top of that foundation for us, and it's considerable saving of money. Um, there's a variety of things like this already in the project to try to save money. Um, I've also been involved in the ADA Committee over the years. I've also been involved in the ADA Committee over the years, and some twenty years ago, we did come up with another plan, and in fact, we looked at a number of different plans, and we found some less expensive ways to deal with this. However, twenty years have passed, some of the things that were available to us as solutions then would not be okay by the state in architectural access award today, and therefore, we'd be pushed closer and closer to the costs that we've gotten on this project now. We also talked a little bit about a cheaper way to approach it in the process of this current planning, and basically, the amount that we would ultimately save would not be worth trying to save when you consider that we've got this other money available from other sources. By the time you, if you want to save two hundred thousand dollars in the project, fine, but we'll also lose the two hundred thousand dollars from the state, so we'll end up paying a similar amount even if we get a cheaper solution. The parking lot as currently planned is very modest, it's only a couple of spaces. It would not be a significant modification of almost what's there now, except to, you know, make it in a better condition. That would make it adequate. It's a disappointment that we have to do that to fit the plan. But again, we're given the situation that if we put it off and we try to go on with bigger and bigger plans, we may find ourselves with higher expenses for construction as well, because the amount of the construction cost increase in the year that we put this off was really a surprise. So at this point, the smart thing to do from my point of view is to work with the plan that we've already invested a lot of money in, get the thing done, and put the thing behind us with the funds that are now available in our hands.
Yes, sir.
My name is Ken Porter. I live at thirty-two Village Lane. I think that this is the right thing to do at nearly the perfect time to do it. Personally, I have friends, neighbors, and family who are not able to access the town hall because of their disabilities. There are many, many other people who are not friends of mine, or not neighbors of mine, or who are not my family, who are in the same situation. I also expect, or would not be surprised at least, that within the next ten years, I will not be able to do the steps on the town hall. That would be most unfortunate. We have the funds available, we've spent a huge amount of time, and I say "we" because I didn't do it, but there was a lot of research and a lot of effort spent finding the best solution for access to this cherished and treasured building of Berlin. And after we pass this and provide access to our disabled neighbors and friends and family, there will still be a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in this fund. At the moment, there's no specific plan to do anything with that money. So let's use it in the best way we can right now. Let's make this beautiful building, the town hall, accessible.
Yes, sir.
Hi, excuse me, a little sick today, but I'll do my best. I'm Buzz Harris, twenty-one Village Lane, and this is just a note on behalf of the Finance Committee in relation to Mr. Wee... Sorry, Peter, Peter, Mr. Les. Hoffman, thank you. In response to Peter Hoffman's question about worrying about what, you know, will the budget run over, et cetera, when this was brought before the Finance Committee, our job on behalf of the town is to worry about things like that, and we at this point have insisted that there be a clerk of the works for this project, and there will be. If you don't know what a clerk of the works is, that is a person who is at the work site during the times when the most expensive or most challenging things are being done, whose job is not to work for the contractor or the subcontractors, but to be there looking out for the town's interests and ensuring work is done correctly and that there are not overruns, and to bring potential problems to our attention. We've also asked that there be a clerk of the works for the town barn for the very same reason, and we're hoping to get a policy in place that all large town projects have this person there to work on behalf of the town's financial interest in the future. So there will be a person performing that function for the elevator construction, just so that you're aware. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Steve Weston, thirty-five Dudley Road. I just have a general question. If we take this now five hundred thousand out of the Commons Fund, and two entities a year or two from now are saying, "Well, we'd like a hundred and thirty thousand, but we only have a hundred and thirty thousand," how do we choose which one gets the money or how do we get that additional hundred and thirty thousand? For those people that could have used this money, but didn't, I agree that the town does need an elevator there, but I'm concerned about future use of the monies. I mean, we're basically using seventy to eighty percent of the money that was there to just do this elevator. That's my question. Anybody can answer that.
Thomas?
In the question and answers, we set out the process that the selectmen use. We have instituted mini-grants, application process. Those are submitted to us during the annual budget process. The selectmen review those and come up with a suggestion for funding or not funding those. As we indicate in the question and answer, we look at the same things for each project. We look at the relevance of the project, educational, recreational, cultural, and similar interests of the town. We look at the availability of alternate financing. Again, we don't want to do maintenance with this work. We don't want to do underwriting and operating budgets with this money. We want it to be something that will be used for things that otherwise would be challenging for the town to get money together. We also look, and this is also very important, we look at demonstrated community and other financial support, because we believe that if we use this fund to leverage other activities where people have won out, found alternate funding contributions, appropriations, et cetera, that that demonstrates that there's support in the community for it. And of course, this elevator project did do so. So that is the process that we would go through. Once we go through that process, we submit our recommendations to FinCom as if it were a special article appropriation, and they review it and make a recommendation, and then we bring it to usually an annual town meeting. We're at a special town meeting here, and it's important to note this because we're in the middle of a sixty-day bid extension period, and if we get out of that, there's no guarantee, you know, what the cost of this would be. But ordinarily, we go through that process, and then this would show up as a special article on the annual town meeting, and people at that point get to speak about it and get to make a decision as to whether to recommend to us, whether to expand the amount that's the result of that process. As far as other money coming from this, it's not out of the question that the town could adopt the Community Preservation Act. It's also not out of the question that if the town wished to appropriate twenty thousand dollars, thirty thousand dollars, forty thousand dollars, you know, out of the budget for cultural purposes, to be awarded through some kind of grant process similar to this, the town is certainly capable of doing that, so that, you know, this is not the last of any money in the world that can be spent on cultural, recreational, et cetera monies in the town. I would say also, and we discussed it just informally, as I say, we were not pleased that we had to throw, you know, this extra money into it, but, and we had hoped that this thing would be leveraged with, you know, a higher state grant, but there still is, you know, forty-three percent support of this coming from other than the cultural funds, which shows the town was willing to appropriate money for it, and it shows that the state felt that it was a valuable project.
Yes? You'll be next, sir.
Angela Yulis, five Marco Road. I just, I know that there's been a core group of people that have been working hard on this project for several years, and they've been very thoughtful and thorough, and they're trying to come up with the best solutions for this. And I know it can be scary feeling like you're giving a lot of money of this cultural mitigation fund to one project, but I want to remind you that this one project, the eighteen-seventy Town Hall, when we had that mitigation money, there was safety that continues, there was conservation money, I think that's eliminated, right? And then there was this cultural mitigation money, which included education, historical, recreation, and culture. And so, at the town hall, we have the Historical Society putting on their programs, we've got the history. We have, in the past, we've had Mrs. Richards put on children's musical theater productions, recreation, education, and culture. We've had, I'm blanking out now, but...
You're okay.
But I mean, I just think it's, I cannot think of a better project that encompasses everything that that cultural item money is for, and I know it feels scary because you have things that you want to do in the back of your mind in your own projects, but I urge you to support that, and I think it's a wise investment in our community and its future, and the Bible says, "How lucky are we to have this awesome structure right in the middle of our town that's well-used and will be even better utilized in the future." Thank you.
I'm going to have Sue speak first, Judy Ninder.
Sue Roberts, one oh-two Central Street. I just have a quick question. I believe right now it's rented out as a function hall on a limited basis, and we get a little bit of income from that, and it's my understanding that with this improvement, we'll be able to increase the ability to have rented out functions, and it can give back to the community that way. Is that correct?
Would someone like to answer that question?
Would you receive the question?
So the question is, with the opportunity to expand the accessibility, are there groups that might rent the facility and generate income for the town? I think that's fair, right, Sue? Abby Dewick?
Abby Dewick, Highland Street. I'm the chair of the Town Hall Advisory Committee, and we've been working on this project for quite some time. So let me answer that question, and then while I'm here, I can answer some of the other questions that have sort of come up. Yes, we can rent it to more people. In fact, since we've been pretty busy the last couple of years, I'd say at least twice a month, we get a request for a rental of the grand hall, which is upstairs, that we have to turn down because it's not accessible. So that definitely will increase. We've had a couple of weddings there that I think that will increase. Fiftieth wedding anniversaries is a popular request, which will then be possible as well. Does that answer your question, Sue? Yeah. Okay, so while I'm here, just let me tell you, thank you for, Angela, for pointing out, we have seven recreation programs a week there, we have educational programs, Japanese horseback riding, believe it or not, classes, we have historical programs, we have a historical museum, the building itself is on the town hall, the National Historic Register. This is a jewel that we have in our town, it's very exciting. One of the things that was asked about was, you know, why does it cost so much? And I, it pains me that it costs that much. One of the problems with the cost is that it's fair wage. Now, I'm a fan of paying people money, but the state requires that we pay a lot of money for the builders, the, not the contractors who's with us right here, but the, you know, the rates per plumber, per electrician, per painter, per, all those numbers, those are, are they almost double what we normally have to pay? It's really quite outrageous, so when we have to publicly bid a project like this, it's not like your own house. It really costs a lot more than it would, so when you use your own head to say, "Hey, I could build that," you know, pretty much double that. As for whether we could do a smaller project, that's a good question, and I think that's something that people would think, "Well, yeah, why don't we just do a bump out, or why don't we just do that?" We've gone through so many iterations of this plan, I can't tell you, but let me just help you understand, the way the building is set up, you can't really do anything other than we're doing, because it has a stage and it has theater companies, two fabulous theater companies that use it. So you can't just have it come into that grand hall on the side or in the back because there's sledge and because you can't get into there. And so, we've worked it, we've looked at every single possible way to do this besides the back. So we came up with the addition on the back, which allows us to use the stage and enter the stage from the back. It's very complicated, but we're so happy we came up with this design. It really, really is great, and it'll make it possible for us to continue all these great things that we have going on here. So I really hope you support this project. I speak on behalf of the dozens or hundreds of people that couldn't make it tonight that are begging the Town Hall Advisory Committee, please make this happen. So could you please consider them, I'm speaking for them as well. I feel as my responsible role as a town person that I represent them as well. So thank you for your consideration, I'll answer more questions if they come up.
All right, Judy, did you want to?
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion to move the question.
All right, a motion has been made to move the question, it's been seconded, it's non-debatable, so what we do is we proceed to a vote as...
Moderator, I have a personal question. I'm the only one here who saw that town hall, everybody's...
Oh, excuse me, I have a motion on the floor, Walter, so I'm...
This is ridiculous. This dirty trick is pulled all the time by this fool.
Thank you, sit down. Okay, I have a motion that is on the floor to move the question, it's non-debatable. So we proceed now to a question. If this is passed, there'll be no further debate, and we'll move to a vote on the article, so as long as everybody understands that. Okay, so all those in favor of moving the question, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The ayes have. So now what we'll do is we'll proceed to a vote on the question, and I'll read it to you one more time. So this is Article One. I move to request the Board of Selectmen expend from the Highland Commons Cultural Funds an additional one hundred and thirty thousand dollars to supplement sums approved under Article Thirty-Six of the May two thousand and sixteen Annual Town Meeting for the purpose of the elevator project for the eighteen-seventy Town Hall building, demolition and replacement of the Historical Commission curatorial building, associated site work, and the additional architectural cost to oversee the project. We'll start with a voice vote, and if I can determine what the will of the hall is, then we'll settle for that. If we, if I can't, then we'll go to a hand count. So all those in favor of Article One, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
I'm, I think I'm convinced, but I'm gonna call for a hand vote, just to be sure. Will the town clerk help me with appointing?
Mr. Moderator, is it in order to be put in a paper ballot this time? A secret ballot?
I believe that it's, we've voted, Walter, so we're not gonna have a paper ballot at this point.
I second the paper ballot.
We've, we've voted on the article. A vote is taking place, so I'm not gonna entertain a motion to work by paper now. Thank you. We're gonna do a hand vote this time. I've got one, two, actually, three people, so... Amy, Amy Grinnear, Kenneth Braun, and Marcia Johnston. Could you come forward? And just over here, Elvis is gonna swear you in. So you, you wanna go ahead and say... Would you, thank you very much. Would those of you that's standing on the side, please move to one part of the sections in the center towards the vote. I'm not gonna have you counted over there on the edge. All right? Glenn, are you prepared to vote?
I am.
Are you prepared to vote?
Indeed, sir.
Then I want you to move up. I don't wanna have any questions to, who's voting in this room, okay? Everybody that's gonna vote has moved into a position where we can see you, right? Okay. All those in favor of the article, please raise your hands. And if you, each count your section, please. Ken, you've got the ones up here, Marcia, you have the ones over here. So we have twenty-seven, thirty-two, and thirty-six from the three sections. So it's a majority vote. There were ninety-five ayes and forty-one noes. Thank you very much.
Article Two. We have several special article accounts from past meetings over the years, and these accounts are proposed to be closed out since they're over. I'm going to, I've decided to divide this question, so we'll have a motion for each of these two sections. Motion under Article Two. Chris Keev, selectman Chris Keev.
Good evening. I move to close out the following special article accounts. Article fifteen, FY eighty-three, done closing for nine thousand and eight dollars and eighty-one cents, which was raised and appropriated. Article seventeen, FY fourteen, refinish and seal hallway and stairs at the library for seven thousand five hundred dollars, which came from free cash. Article twenty-seven, FY fifteen, emergency service study, one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, which was free cash. Article ten, special town meeting, FY fifteen, solar panels, community garden, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and two cents, from free cash. All sums to be appropriated to the stabilization fund.
Motion is made and seconded to appropriate these items, these money from these four articles to the stabilization fund. Finance committee's recommendation. Finance committee recommends. Is there anything else to be said on this motion? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. And another motion under this article? Judy, selectman Judy Boman?
I move to close out the following special, special article accounts. Article nineteen, FY sixteen, thermal imaging cameras, two thousand and twenty dollars, the public safety funds. Article thirty, FY sixteen, replacing eight windows at the library, two thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars, cultural funds. Article twenty-nine, FY sixteen, council on aging bus for transportation, four thousand one hundred dollars, the senior housing fund. Article three, special town meeting, FY sixteen, council on aging bus startup cost, two dollars and seventy-five cents. That was from Article twenty-nine, FY sixteen, the senior housing fund. Article seventeen, FY seventeen, replacement of breathing apparatus and air cylinders, fifty-one thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars, public safety funds. And to return the unspent balances to their respective Highland Commons mitigation accounts.
Motion is made and seconded, and we have these five different amounts that were previously appropriated, which would be returned to their Highland Commons mitigation accounts. Finance committee's recommendation. Finance committee recommends. Is there anything to be said on this motion? Judy?
Mr. Moderator, I would like the fire chief to come up to the front. He will explain the fifty-one thousand dollar return.
Chief Zee?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Basically, we had a valuation done of the breathing apparatus that we had. We spent a couple of thousand dollars out of repairs and maintenance to have them all inspected and tested, and a few compares made, and we felt it was more appropriate to get the compressor replaced. It's over twenty years old, and it can't build the pressure that we need to, to fill all of our bottles. It can only go up to forty-five hundred psi. Some of our bottles are six thousand, so some of them can only be three-quarters full. So we thought we'd turn the money back so we could get the compressor, which you'll see in the following article, and then next year we'll apply for a federal grant to try to replace the breathing apparatus. At that point in time, it'll be of an age and of, out two National Fire Protection Association cycles for when they reevaluate things, so it makes it more likely to get a grant for it.
Chief, just a clarification. In this action, we're returning the money from its previous appropriation, and under Article Five of this meeting, we have the proposal to use that same money as you just stated.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Anyone else wanna speak to that? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article Three. This is a, a proposal to expend money for the Conservation Fund for a property of some eighty acres off Lyman Road. Selectman Zee?
First of all, I've been asked to, to do this, but should really be, Walter, this is a parcel of land that he's been chasing like Ahab chased the white whale. And finally, after decades, we were able to achieve this. I move to appropriate and authorize through the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, according to Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section eight C, to expend this sum of four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the Conservation Fund for the purpose of acquiring by gift, purchase, or eminent domain, for conservation and passive recreation purposes, a certain property known as the Webjo Co. Inc. property, consisting of eighty acres, more or less, located on Lyman Road by the Northborough Town Line, that said land be conveyed to said town to be held under the care, custody, management, and control of the Conservation Commission of the Town of Berlin pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty, Section eight C. That the Board of Selectmen and the Conservation Commission be authorized to file on behalf of the Town of Berlin any and all applications deemed necessary for grants and/or reimbursements from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under the Land and Water Conservation Fund Act Public Law eighty-eight, five seventy-eight, comma seventy-eight, statute eight ninety-seven, and/or any other grants and/or reimbursements for the acquisition of said property, that said grants and/or reimbursements be placed in the Conservation Fund for the purpose of accomplishing future open space preservation or acquisitions, and that the Board of Selectmen and the Conservation Commission be authorized to enter into all agreements and execute any and all instruments that they believe to be in the best interests of the Town of Berlin to effect said purchase and to grant a perpetual conservation restriction in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter one eighty-four, Sections thirty-one to thirty-three, to Sudbury Valley trustees. You got that? Others will speak to this motion, but I think you could tell that this is a formal motion that's required by the Commonwealth when we are getting some funding from the Commonwealth to purchase property.
I shall not read this complicated motion again. You have it in your, in the warrant that was sent out to you. The wording has not been significantly changed, except for the amount of money. The amount of money in the motion is four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, which is an increase over the three fifty-five that was in your warrant. Normally, I would not accept a motion like this because of the amount that it is over the number that was given. However, the purpose has not changed, is to acquire this particular property as described previously. And this is money from the Conservation Fund. In Berlin, the Conservation Commission has normally expended money from this fund with the Selectmen's okay, without any town meeting approval, on many occasions. And indeed, they have voted to approve this and would buy this land with Conservation Fund money, whether we approved it or not. So really, our action in regard to the amount of money, the four twenty-five, is a ratification of their vote from the Conservation Fund. However, as Thomas was saying, we need to vote this, on this floor, in order to apply for the state funds, because the state requires this kind of an action of the town. So we're, we're really ratifying their vote, and for that reason, I'm willing to accept this increased amount. It's not tax money, it's Conservation Fund money. Finance committee's comment? Finance committee recommends. Does someone wanna make a primary statement in regard to this motion? Steve Beard of the Conservation Commission.
Well, as Tom mentioned, we've been hunting this land for years. Walter's been on it and been on it. We're hoping that we have it for TRITAN. And we worked very hard to get that, and that didn't happen. We couldn't get the paperwork and everything agreed to. As Tom mentioned, we have the funds, and we are going to move on this property. So we actually paid, we're gonna pay for it out of the Open Space Fund, and so it'll be no burden to the town whatsoever, so we're moving on it. The reason why we're here tonight is we wanna apply for grant to get like one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars return. And to, to apply for that grant, it has to go above the, for the town here. So that's why we're here tonight. So we are gonna take, we are very excited that we have now finally got to the point where we're gonna get this land. Now, if we can get some return from the state, why not? And put, and put it back into our funds so we can even get more land. So the vote tonight is just for the approval to apply for a grant, which requires a town vote. Thank you.
Other others that wish to speak?
Skip Tergan, fifty-nine Ball Hill Road. We are at a real turning point relative to conservation in this town. Walter has worked long and hard, along with the Conservation Commission, for decades to preserve conservation lands in town. This is a unique, pristine property that is affronting, it fronts up Lyman Road, but it also provides a spectacular vista to this town all across the top of Pisgah. It abuts other wildlife land, and if any of you have ever walked this beautiful piece of property, you can see the John Hancock Tower and the Prue on a sunny day. It's the most spectacular view that you're gonna get from Berlin of the Boston skyline. It's good for wildlife, it's good for conservation. This land will never be cheaper, and Walter has worked with his family for over twenty years to make this happen. This is probably our last chance to make it happen. And the price is the right price, and if you want your grandchildren and your children to have a place to walk in this town and be proud of Berlin, and the reason that those of you that live here came to this town, this is another reason, and I recommend that you vote for it.
Is there some information that we don't have that you need to give us?
Yes.
Come on up and introduce yourself and make it short, please.
Ashley Davies, Sudbury...
Pull the microphone down here. Here you go.
Ashley Davies, Sudbury Valley trustees. I just wanna make it clear that the grant funding that we've, the town has applied for for this project is just about awarded, and it would cover almost fifty percent of the acquisition of project costs. So this is sort of a formality, and that money is not just a pie in the sky, it's pretty much all but, we've gotten the letter for it. So that's, that's forthcoming, and this sort of grant money just doesn't, it's not guaranteed, it's not something that just comes around every day. This is a really important project, and this grant funding may not come again, so I just wanted to make sure we knew that.
Thank you, Ashley. Is there anyone else? If not, don't ask me to vote. I will not read the long motion again. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Motion carries with one dissenting vote. And the moderator declares to have a two-thirds vote, because I have, it's a vote to acquire property, and it has to have a two-thirds majority. Article Four. See if the town will expense on five hundred thousand dollars from the Conservation Fund, and this is for a, a conservation restriction on a piece of property. Tom Andrew?
I promise this is the last time you'll hear my voice this evening. Again, I was asked to do this, and again, it's a formal motion, so it's gonna be long. I move to appropriate and authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, according to Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section eight C, to expend a sum of five hundred thousand dollars from the Conservation Fund for the purposes of acquiring by gift, purchase, or eminent domain, for conservation and passive recreation purposes, a conservation restriction to be held jointly by the Town of Berlin and Sudbury Valley trustees, over certain property known as Great Oak Farm, consisting of forty point three nine acres, more or less, lugging... three-nine acres, more or less, located on Highland Street, Berlin, assessors map twenty as lots forty-seven and forty-eight, and map twenty-one as lots one, two, ten, ten dash one, and seventeen. That said conservation restriction be conveyed to said town to be held under the care, custody, management, and control of the Conservation Commission of the Town of Berlin pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty, Section eight C, and Sudbury Valley trustees. That the Board of Selectmen and the Conservation Commission be authorized to accept said conservation restriction, meeting the requirements of Mass. General Laws, Chapter one eighty-four, Sections thirty-one to thirty-three, on said property. That the Board of Selectmen and the Conservation Commission be authorized to file, on behalf of the Town of Berlin, any and all applications deemed necessary for grants and/or reimbursements from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, deemed necessary under Chapter one thirty-two A, Section eleven, and/or any others in any way connected with the scope of this article. That said grants, awards, and/or reimbursements be placed in the Conservation Fund for the purpose of accomplishing future open space preservation or acquisitions, and that the Board of Selectmen and the Conservation Commission be authorized to enter into all agreements and execute any and all instruments as may be necessary, on behalf of the Town of Berlin, to effect said purchase.
Motion is made and seconded, and it isn't the language as you find it in your article, so I shall not read it further. Finance Committee have a comment? Finance Committee recommends? Who's going to speak to present this one? Steve?
Okay, as, as was mentioned, this is a conservation restriction. We are not purchasing this land. This is a preserved farmland in the town, so this property can still be sold, could be, but it will be reserved for, for the way it is now as a farm. So we are not buying the land, we are buying a conservation restriction, which is something we might call it as development rights. So other words, it will go on the deed of the property. So other words, this farm will, this farm will stay as a farm and cannot be developed, and will keep the open space as it is today. So it's really what it is for, is to preserve that, that area as it is today, on the deed. The Conservation has the funds in its account, so again, it's no money to the town, so we're going to just take it all our fun and buy the conservation restriction. Thank you.
Are there others that wish to speak? Paul McKelton?
Paul McKelton, Carter Street, just a point of information. If we could be told what the financial status of the Conservation Funds are after these expenditures?
Okay. Could someone read, you know, comment in regard to the balance of Conservation Fund after these expenditures? Walter Bigford of Conservation Commission?
Walter Bigford, two twelve South Street. We have about a million and a quarter in the fund, so after these two expenditures, especially if we get the grant, which appears that we're going to on one of them anyway, and probably both of them, we'll still have, you know, six or seven hundred thousand left in the fund, of which we're looking at in another very important project to, to protect some agricultural land. Hope that answers your question.
Anyone else wish to speak? Beesie Benson?
Beesie Benson, twenty-five Village Lane, formerly of two-two-seven Highland Street, which is the residence on this property in question. And on behalf of the Benson family, Steen Benson, and our son Torsten Benson, who's a wildlife biologist in Alaska, graduated to Hondo, we are very excited to have the opportunity to protect this land for Berlin. It means that as you enter the town from the north on Highland Street, you will always see farmland on both sides of the road. It gives us great joy to be able to restrict this land for the enjoyment of Berlin.
Anyone else wish to speak to this motion? Tom?
Tom Sanford, four-two-five Soraya Hill Road. Is this restriction in perpetuity, or does it have a sunset clause?
It's perpetuity.
In perpetuity. Anyone else wish to speak?
Greg Halfpenny, one-eighty-seven Highland Street. Would the land be restricted only for farmland, or what other passive recreational activities could take place on it if it ever were sold?
Someone wish, Walter, you want to speak to it?
Walter Bigford, two-twelve South Street. You know how to get this grant, in fact, there has to be demonstrated recreational possibilities on that land, and one of the things would be a, a trail which circumvents the entire property around there, and just being able to look at that entry to the town is well worth it. But I also want to point out, and it should have been pointed out earlier, that the Bensons are selling this conservation restriction far, at a far less price than what it was appraised at. That's how much they love the land. The son who's in Alaska, you know, he doesn't want the money, he just wants to protect that land. The speaker of the Benson family wants it, Steen wants it, and you don't get that very often. So I think this is a wonderful opportunity, and I think we owe them a debt of gratitude. Thank you.
Good evening. Gretchen Stoddard.
Gretchen, my, just so it's up in front of you.
Gretchen Stoddard, sixty-nine Randall Road. My land abuts Steen and Carlos, and I want to talk to you a little bit about a pond that you cannot see from the street. It's on the west side of Highland, it's over the horse pastures and down in a hollow. It's a beautiful, beautiful pond that I think they put in for irrigation. I ride by it constantly. The wildlife in that pond is admirable. My horses have gotten used to the blue herds coming up out of the water. It happens so often. We have hawks, and red fox, and coyotes, and bobcats. The deer come up through there all the time. It's an incredible wildlife refuge, and it connects to a lot of open land, from his land to our land, to Berlin Golf Course, over into the land in Bolton. You can eventually connect right up to Bolton Orchard. So the opportunity for wildlife to come through and water at that pond is significant. I strongly hope that you will support the Bensons in keeping that property. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just a couple more things to add. Walter mentioned the trail that will skirt the property. This is something that the Benson family insisted upon, and in addition to the conservation restriction that they're selling to the town at a bargain rate, they're donating a small parcel of land that abuts Soraya Hill Road, and that's where a parking area and a trailhead will go in so that the public can access this trail. In addition, with the property being preserved for agricultural purposes, there are several farmers in town that have shown interest in making use of the property in the future. So not only will the scenic views be preserved, but the property will be preserved for both the public to recreate on, but also for local farmers to use. So.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just wondering how much grant money is anticipated for this one, and it does seem like a wonderful project. Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay.
I should move to that?
Sure. Is there something else you want?
No, I want to have an answer, I have another.
Oh, okay.
Off the top of my head, I'm trying to remember, but it's fifty percent of the purchase price, so a little less, probably around three hundred and fifty thousand is what we'd anticipate. And we have a good response from the state, though it's pushed off until next grant round, so we won't know for sure, but I, I believe that we, we will get the grant funding for this.
Anyone else? I thought, I'll ask you to vote. The motion is long, it's the same as it says on your warrant, now I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Motion carries by a two-thirds vote. Article Five, to see if the town votes to raise the appropriate end of borrowing transfer from available funds, fifty-one thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars for the purpose of replacement of the breathing apparatus compressor system. Judy Bowman?
I move to request the Board of Selectmen expend from the Highland Commons Public Safety Funds, fifty-one thousand five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the purpose of replacement of the fire department's breathing apparatus compressor system.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to request the Board of Selectmen to expend from the Highland Commons Public Safety Funds, fifty-one thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars for the purpose of replacement of the fire department's breathing apparatus compressor system. Judy?
So in Article Two, we returned fifty-one thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars for breathing apparatus and air cylinders, and in this article, as the chief explained, it's requesting that they get a compressor instead.
Finance Committee's comment? Finance Committee recommends. Is anyone else wish to speak to this motion?
Frank Burrow, Baker Road. Just a little confused. I believe we put the money in the stabilization fund, but we're taking it out of-
No, we, we put this money, it had come from the Highland Commons Public Safety Fund, we put it back in the Highland Commons Safety Fund-
My mistake.
-earlier in the meeting. Yeah. Now we're taking it out to do something else with it. Anyone else want to speak to it? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries in the affirmative.
And last motion at the scene, I guess I move to dissolve the meeting.
Motion is made and seconded to dissolve the meeting. Before I declare, before I take that vote, I will say, please help us pick up chairs, and then I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimous.